Look at it and approve it for 500 bucks.
Awesome. All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome. It's Wednesday, April 26th, 2023. It's nine o'clock, and we're here in the Senator Hearing Room for our weekly board session. As always, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I have been told by no less than four people this morning that today is Administrative Professionals Day, and I think that's because the folks who work in Marion County as administrative professionals, we are the best ever. And so every person I talk to is like, "Don't forget, don't forget." And so I want to say thank you to all of our administrative professionals. Brenda, thank you. Jane, you count as an administrative professional-ish?
Ish.
Ish, okay, that's good.
I think they're more talented than I am, I gotta be honest.
That's almost certainly true.
Yes.
But we are, sorry, that's not, that's not right. I was putting myself into that category, I'm sorry, Jane. I'm a recovering lawyer, I used to be a lawyer, and so I think most lawyers know that without our paralegals and secretaries, we would die.
No, 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 no.
Anyway, first rule of holes, when you're in one, stop digging. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I've always understood this, once a lawyer, always a lawyer.
Is that right?
Can't go back.
You can't go back?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just...
You crossed the line.
Yeah, well, all right, such is life. Okay, so with that lovely announcement, seriously, thank you to everyone who helps make the county run, and not just in the county, but not just in the government part of the county, but in the whole county. Happy Administrative Professionals Day, thank you for all that you do. We don't have anybody signed up for public comment, but we do have a proclamation this morning. We're going to consider approval of a proclamation designating the month of May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Marion County. So Phil, Laura, and Kelly, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning. You're gonna have to make sure those microphones are on and then go ahead and introduce yourself for the record.
They had me to sit in the middle, so...
We got here first, so we got to pick where we sit.
Great.
So, good morning, Commissioners, we're behalf of the Division Director, and I have with me today Laura Spross.
Phil, pull out microphone.
Zero Suicide Coordinator and Kelly Martin, Health Educator. We are here today to ask for the proclamation of May Mental Health Awareness Month. We've had widespread developmental support for mental health awareness efforts. Community resources have been overwhelmingly positive for over a decade, and we are grateful for the board's partnership and recognition of mental health awareness. Laura and Kelly will present on some of the recent mental health efforts.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you so much for letting us come today and highlight the importance of mental health in our community. My name's Kelly Martin, and before we get into May as mental health awareness, we wanted to take just a moment and highlight some of the activities that we did in September, which is Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month. We were really excited about all the great accomplishments that we did with our community partners and to support the mental health and wellbeing of our community. You might recall that the theme is "Life is Better With You Here", so this was one of the T-shirts that we had last year, and we've continued that theme on this year. Well, in Laurel, I'll talk a little bit more about that. But we've got a lot of great feedback about this message from our community partners and from organizations, and we put together a little sideshow to highlight some of the activities we did, so we'd love to show that to you and hope you enjoy it.
It's short.
It's short. Technology limitations a little bit on some of these, but we were able to go out and do some pop-ups throughout the county and had some special guest stars, too.
We were trying to shoot Sam the song and...
It's "Life is Better With You" by Michael Franty.
Michael who?
Franty. Franty.
Thank you.
So in keeping with the theme for September, we're going a little bit further with our theme for May, that "Life is Better With You Here and Thriving". We believe that every single person brings value and meaning to our lives, but we also aspire to build a community together that is flourishing and resilient. According to the National Alliance of Mental Illness, 65% of Americans are concerned about the stigma around mental illness, and we know that stigma counteracts help-seeking and delays necessary treatment. All people, no matter where they are on their mental health journey, are deserving of support, resources, fulfillment, and meaningful connections. Our hope is that by continuing to identify and bust stigma around mental health, we can build a network of safety and belonging in our communities.
So in May, we're working to raise awareness and decrease stigma around mental health in our communities. We're partnering with local schools and organizations to host pop-up events where we'll be distributing resources that emphasize resiliency building and important resources in our community. The Mid Valley Suicide Prevention Coalition, which we coordinate with Polk County, will be doing additional improved signs of hope, which we have a couple examples here. So they have positive messages like "Life is Better With You Here" and "Hope Saves Lives", or "One Day at a Time", or "And You Can Do Hard Things", and we have those in English and Spanish and Russian. And we're giving those to our community partners throughout Marion and Polk County. As well, we're going to have a large presence on our social media, including Mental Health Mondays, which we're excited about, highlighting different community partners. And then to end the month, we're going to have a screening of the documentary "Screenagers", the next chapter, which really dives into youth mental health and gives parents and youth tips on how to help deal with stress and anxiety.
We've also got some of the signs and some of our goodies for you here as well that we'll give you. But we just really think it's important to recognize the energy and attention that there is in our community and just around the county to mental health care, to access, and to sustainability. And so we hope that you continue to support the, excuse me, the prevention and treatment efforts that we and our community partners are doing every day. We appreciate the opportunity again to share each year with you about our efforts. I think Phil said that we've been doing these proclamations for probably close to a decade or over a decade. And so we are just very grateful again to be able to come here and share about this with you. We hope that you aspire with us to a community that is hopeful and resilient and thriving.
Great, well, thank you. Thank you for all the work that you do day in and day out. I know that this is, there's a lot of need out there. You're kind of the few and the strong there in Marion County Behavioral Health, so thanks for all the work that you do. Commissioner Cameron, do you have any...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I've personally, you know, in my life, had to seek help from many different people, but also from professionals, and it does make a difference, you know, whether that was through life counseling or even some things we went through here in the last few years that really impacted me. And I really appreciate that there's that kind of help out there, and I want to encourage people to know that it's okay to seek that. And the challenge we have before us, though, is the staffing and having people, and I really appreciate the Health Department and this board and some of the direction we gave on, you know, the investments in trying to offer scholarships for people to go and get trained in mental health. I don't know, Phil, if that's trickled down yet to help...
There are three people.
That are taking advantage of that? Fantastic, I mean, and then the recruiting from out of the state, because what we saw was people just, you know, you come from Yamhill to Marion, what did we do for the region? We didn't help anybody. And, you know, it was selfish in that way. And so I really appreciate the outward mindset that we have in our Health Department, and especially in this area. And we know that our people are really working hard, and we know that, and we really appreciate it. And I know we got an email this week on some certain caseloads that we're just saying we can't take anymore, because we really value our people that are doing the work. And so we have three more, and maybe, you know, in two years, it'll be 30 more that we've seen take advantage of that training and that scholarship. So thank you, it's good to hear that we have some people within that are trying to do that, so thank you very much.
I'm one of those people that plans to take advantage of it in the next couple years, so...
Fantastic. This, great, makes my heart happy today.
You know, one of the things that we talk about in the board's office sometimes is there can be this illusion that people have that somewhere else, somebody else, has it all figured out. That I'm a mess, you know, I have all my problems, but over there, that person, they don't have any problems, and I wish I was like them, right? And that's a lie we have to really dispel in our community, you know? I like to say, "We're all messed up, but we can all be messed up together in a positive way." You know, we can all sort of come together and take care of each other and recognize that we all have our things that we're struggling with, and that's okay, that's okay. We can still take care of each other and be there for each other, and this community can still be a wonderful place in the midst of our struggles. And so I just think that's a really important message for people in our community here.
Yeah, and I think of youth, I think of when I was younger, you know, well, that was a long time ago. But I just think of the struggles I had in junior high school or wherever, elementary school probably, I remember the struggles that I had. And then you pile on social media on that today with kids, and I just, I saw on the news this morning that there's two members of Congress, I think, way on either sides of the aisle that are filing a bill to try to have social media be the age of 18 before it, you know, without parental permission to have kids on social media. And I don't know how you control that, but as a parent, I know we were pretty strict about it. Strict, but educating and, of course, even when my girls now are 38 and 35, it wasn't as prevalent as it is today. But just pour those pressures on that our society has, I guess, evolved to, that just even adds more pressure. Can't imagine the things that youth have to go through today to see that there's still hope for them. And I think that's a really important thing, that whatever we can do... And at the opening of the Navigation Center on Monday, I actually said that, you know, providing hope for one individual makes a difference in their life. And just saying, "You can move this step, you can move to this point", and having that guidance to say, "Hey, yeah, I can do that", and then it's just like the technical careers that we have, the CTE programs for high school students, you go, "Hey, you know, somebody's in there doing measurements now because they're in construction. Well, that same person, because they had that step, could become an engineer and build bridges for us someday", whereas if they didn't have that opportunity in high school, they may not get there because they get frustrated and don't see that hope. So all the little things that we do to give people the hope they need to keep moving forward in their lives is really important. So really appreciate what you do to help people see that and make a difference in their lives.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Cameron, I'll take a motion, if you would.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I will move that we approve a proclamation designating the month of May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Marion County.
And I'll second the motion. We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. All right, take us away.
So, Mr. Chair, before the Board of Commissioners from Marion County, Oregon, in the matter proclaiming the month of May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Marion County, this matter became before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on April 26, 2023, whereas the mental health and wellness of Marion County residents is of the utmost importance to the well-being of Marion County as a whole, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in Marion County, in Oregon and in the United States, as one in five adults and one in six children live with a mental health condition, and whereas with advocacy and effective treatment, individuals living with mental health conditions can live full and meaningful lives, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce adverse personal and community impacts of mental health conditions and promote recovery, and whereas shame, stigma, and unequitable access to treatment actively work against the wellness of individuals and may prevent them from seeking timely and appropriate help, and...
Whereas every person and organization share a role in supporting prevention and treatment efforts and reducing stigma, and whereas people experiencing mental health challenges need understanding, empathetic, and encouraging places of belonging as they seek support, and whereas every person or organization has an essential role in supporting suicide prevention, reducing stigma, and saving lives, and whereas Marion County Health and Human Services will continue to foster relationships with community partners to spread recovery, wellness, and prevention efforts throughout our communities, and whereas Marion County Health and Human Services believes that life is better when our community can achieve its highest level of health and is even better when our community is flourishing, now therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that the month of May 2023 is Mental Health Awareness Month in Marion County. All right, and we sign these things, here we go. So, we got one for you and we got one for us. Do you want to take a picture? Yes, okay, we're doing pictures.
Just like trick or treat?
Oh, there you go, that's pretty good.
Oh, wow.
Thank you.
So we can get a tour.
Did I? Ah, there we go. Okay, Commissioner Cameron, we are moving on to our consent agenda. Would you like to make that motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll move the consent calendar under Board of Commissioners, Board Committee Appointments, Water Quality, excuse me, Advisory Committee, approve orders reappointing Brenda Sanchez as an at-large member and Rick Massey as a land development representative to the Marion County Quality, Water Quality Advisory Committee with terms ending December 31st, 2026. Under Board Appointments, Marion County Retirement Plans Committee, approve orders appointing Salvador Larenas and Ryan Matthews to the Marion County Retirement Plans Committee. Ryan, you can leave now. Under Public Works, receive the Hearings Officer's Decision Denying Conditional Use, CU Case 22-041 Silver Creek Solar LLC. Under the Tax Office, approve an order for a property tax refund in the amount of $28,162.71 for Home Depot USA Inc. Tax Account 339674. Also under the Tax Office, approve an order for property tax refund in the amount of $88,623.24 for Amazon.com Services Inc. Tax Account Number 346785.
And I'll second the motion. We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, next up, we have Rachel here, and we're going to consider a resolution approving the fiscal year 2023/2024 County Assessment Function Funding Assistance Grant. Wow, that's a mouthful. Tell us what that is.
I'm glad you said so. I'm working with the representatives of the Council. I'm at the Marion County Assessors Office, present the grant. In 1989, the legislature created this grant to stabilize funding for property tax assessment taxation. And this is not just our office, it's the Assessor's Office, the Tax Office, Board of Property Tax Appeals and Clerk's Office, Assessment and Taxation Support by IT.
Oh, you gotta turn your mic on, it looks like it, can you tap it or pull it closer to you? Hold on.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Let's see.
Hello?
Can you hear Rachel back there?
Do you want me to switch to that one? Yeah.
Yeah, swish, swish, yeah, sorry about that.
So it includes our office, Tax Office, Board of Property Tax Appeal through the Clerk's Office, Assessment and Taxation Support by IT, and then the tax distribution through the Treasurer's Office. And the funds available for the statewide CFA are derived from a percentage of interest collected on delinquent property tax accounts and also a fee on many of the documents reported in the Clerk's Office. The total CFA funds to be distributed statewide, and this is estimated, for fiscal year 2324 are projected to be $16.3 million. I do want to make note that last year, they estimated a distribution of $18.9 million, but with the decrease in recordings and delinquent interest income, so far, our actual distribution is only looking like it'll be $14.6 million. So even with that being said, they are expecting more next year than we got this year, but the interest rates going up and the market leveling off has definitely impacted this fund. The certified grant expenditures for fiscal year 2324 are $8,998,323, and this includes all the departments that I spoke of earlier. The actual grant revenue to Marion County is estimated to be $975,190, or 10.8% of those expenditures, or 11% of the Assessor's Office budget. Another thing of note is that at the origination of the CFA grant in 89, it funded approximately 35% of assessment and taxation, and now we're at 10.8. So we very much appreciate the support that the county's given us to continue funding the Assessor's Office so that we can continue to collect funds for the county.
Thank you. Wait, is that unusual for the state to give us a program and then reduce the support over time? That seems weird, is that not, is that not how that is supposed to go?
You see my lips moving? All right, Mr. Chair, you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, consider, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve a resolution, the fiscal year 2324 County Assessment Function Funding Assistance Grant.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion?
The only question I have, excuse me, Mr. Chair...
Please.
Is this a motion to approve the grant or a motion to approve the grant application?
To approve the grant application that I'll be submitting to the state.
Oh, okay, well, Mr. Chair, I'll restate the motion to consider a resolution to approve the grant for the fiscal year 2023.
The grant application.
Yeah, grant application for the fiscal year 2324 County Assessment Function Funding Assistance Grant.
I'll second that motion, thank you, Jane.
You guys are getting good at saying that.
I don't know about that. We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion?
No.
No? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you.
So we'll see how much they reduce it by after we get the grant.
That's it, that's it. I feel a little, it's a little strange, because it's funded by delinquent tax interest and recordings, right? So I'm rooting for more recordings, I'm not necessarily rooting for more delinquencies, so that's all. All right, okay, next up, Terry and Jeff, are you here? Great, we're going to consider approval of a public improvement agreement with Lindstrom Construction LLC in the amount of $408,626.80 for the Marion County Transition Center Shower Restoration Project through October 31st, 2023. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning. For the record, Terry Stoner, Facilities and Construction Manager.
Jeff Bonney, Facilities Analyst.
So this is in coordination with an approved CIP that we have for the refurbishment of the transition showers, restrooms and showers. And what it'll consist of is basically replacing the exhaust fans to make them more powerful, replacing flooring, painting walls, replacing damaged doors, that kind of stuff. So with this approval, it's where we can move forward with this project and get it into the construction space.
Jeff, do you have anything to add?
No, unless you have any questions.
Any questions?
Not this time. I know we saw this project in our report recently, and we got, I know we got, you got into doing some repairs and found out, like, a lot of, how would I say this? A lot of bathroom construction, you found out a lot more that needed to be done, so...
Yes.
Dry rot and other things, so appreciate the presentation you gave us a couple weeks ago, I think it was. So if you're ready, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the public improvement agreement with Lindstrom Construction LLC in the amount of $408,626.80 for the Marion County Transition Center Shower Restoration Project through October 2023, October 31st, 2023.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, and you guys are still here, and we're going to consider approval amendment number one to the Standard Professional Services Agreement with Mackenzie Engineering to add $525,955 for a new contract total of $606,455 to provide architecture and engineering services for phases two through seven for the Marion County Evidence Building through September 1st, 2023. That's exciting, this has been a project we've been working on for a while.
It is, and it's, we're happy to be here. We are moving into the second phase, as you said, to refurb, or to, for the design and services contract. This is a high priority for us and the Sheriff's Department, so we're going to be concentrating on moving this forward as quickly as we can. We already have scheduled the kickoff meeting in anticipation of your approval of this contract for next week, so the design firm is ready to go and get started on it.
Fabulous. Any questions, Commissioner Cameron? Any to add, Jeff?
Nope.
All right, let's get this thing going, we've been hungry for this one.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of amendment number one to the Standard Professional Services Agreement with Mackenzie Engineering, Inc. to add $525,955 for a new contract total of $606,455,000 to provide agriculture and engineering services for phases one, excuse me, phases two through seven for the Marion County Evidence Building Project through September 1st, 2023.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, thank you, Philman. Ryan, you're up next.
I thought I told him he could leave.
What's that?
I told him he could leave after we appointed him.
I was gonna make a comment that he might have some other work to do today, but...
You know, you could have moved this to consent, and then I could have... So for the record, Ryan Matthews, Administrator with Marion County Health and Human Services. So I am here seeking approval of our provider contract agreement with Pacific Source Community Solutions. So for those unaware, Pacific Source is the coordinated care organization for the Marion Polk County region. They administer and manage the benefit for our Medicaid population within that region. We are one of their largest providers, of course, and this contract actually covers our full array of services. So it helps to pay for our role as a local public health authority. It also pays for mental health services, which would include children's and adult outpatient services in our crisis system. It also covers funding for substance use treatment from our addiction treatment services program. And in this contract specifically, it's added funding for his place, which we, I know we recently had a ribbon-cutting event, and we opened that house in late February, so we have added that to our contract with Pacific Source, so they'll fund the ongoing services and supports necessary to maintain that program. Pacific Source took over this role in January of 2020. Pacific Source took over this role in January of 2020, and since then, you know, we've worked hard to build a productive relationship with them. They were, they were new to the region, and I think that, you know, we've, we've managed to work really well together to support the population that we share in our goals of serving. This contract is broken up into two components, and so the dollar amount of 24 million is an estimate. There's a portion of this contract that is fee for service, so it'll be based on how many billable services we provide to Pacific Source members, and that, that will approximate around 4 million of that 24 million. And then the other 20 million estimated is related to the per member per month allocation. So for every Pacific Source member that they have enrolled, we receive $9.73. That's up from a little over $7 that it was in our prior year contract. And so depending on how the membership for Pacific Source moves, increases or decreases from month to month, that does change our funding, but we're estimating that this agreement will result in about $24 million in Medicaid revenue coming to support, you know, our service delivery to Pacific Source members, and that's up from about 19 to 20 million that we received last calendar year. So, so we're excited to, to get this in place. This is retroactive to January 1st, and there'll be payments that'll kind of be going back and churning up at this new rate. So, I don't know if there's any questions you have specifically about this agreement?
Ryan, we had some negotiated language in the last agreement. I just want to confirm that that's included in this amendment that is coming forward to us?
Yes, the addendum to the wraparound?
Yes.
Yes, that is. And so that, along with our Schedule A2, which is where they sort of outline the new funding model and rate changes, are the only things that's changing. The, the rest of the provider agreement that we negotiated back in 2020, that was the full scope of all the services and roles and responsibilities, that has not been changed. They just basically swap out this addendum and this attachment into the backend of our existing agreement.
And, and the rapid addendum includes the, the language that we negotiated?
That's correct. They, they, there was a part of the delay in us getting this approved is there, there was sort of a hiccup along, sort of related to some red line language that we had made, and they have made that swap on their end.
Okay.
That's in this version.
Okay. Commissioner Cameron, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, then I'll take a motion.
Do you want to motion move it to consent counter, like you said?
Nope.
Too late now.
Too late.
Nice try.
$24 million move to the consent counter. Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve amendment number 10 to the incoming funds participating provider service agreement with Pacific Source Community Solutions to add $24 million for a new contract total of $62,172,591 to implement and administer covered services under the Oregon Health Plan through December 31st, 2023.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Who's up next? Carol? We're to consider approval of the American Rescue Plan Subrecipient Agreement with Catholic Community Services Foundation, the amount of $500,000 for the Pacific Station Highland Cottage's Redevelopment Project. That will include six housing units for Marion County's Our Place through June 30th, 2024. That sounds pretty good.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
For the record, Carol Perry, Division Director for Addiction Treatment Services with Marion County Health and Human Services. I am here today seeking approval for a subrecipient agreement of $500,000 with Catholic Community Services Foundation. The $500,000 is startup funds to secure the right for Marion County.
Can you talk into that microphone?
Services. To secure a, to secure the right for leasing six of the units, that Catholic Community Services Foundation is going to be developing a 12 multifamily complex, so that will give us the opportunity to lease six of the units to develop a Our Place program, which would model after the county's Her Place and His Place program for day treatment services with supported housing for families with dependent children. Let's see. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? We just did a ribbon cutting for His Place.
We did.
That was a pretty good day.
It's a week and a half ago.
Let's have another good day.
That would be great.
Yeah, fabulous. Okay, well, thanks for bringing this forward, and this is, is this ARPA money from the allocation that we got?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, very good. Commissioner Cameron, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the American Rescue Plan Act Subrecipient Agreement in Catholic Community Services Foundation in the amount of $500,000 for the Pacific Station Highland Cottage's Redevelopment Project that will include six housing units for Marion County's Our Place through June 30th, 2024.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? I would just note for the record that I serve on the foundation board of directors, but it's a volunteer position. I don't receive any money or compensation for that, so it's not a conflict of interest, but I just want to make sure that it avoids the appearance of a conflict, so. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Katrina, you're up, and I'm not even gonna start, you're gonna read this, not me, because it's really long.
Good morning. My name's Katrina Griffith. I'm the Health and Human Services Deputy Director, and I'm here today with the 14th Amendment to our intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Health Authority. To decrease the funding for 1.5 million for a new contract total of $18,551,888.19 through June 30th of 2023. So I do want to start off by saying we're not actually losing any of these funds, that this is an adjustment from previous fiscal years that Oregon Health Authority and Marion County had, didn't quite catch some of our reporting from fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21. So if you can remember back that far, we were in the middle of COVID. These are COVID dollars that we did in fact spend, Oregon Health Authority, however, did not reflect on their end that Marion County spent these dollars, and so they were carried over into the next fiscal year. So they showed up in our fiscal year 23 contract, however, they were spent in fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21. And that is the case for both the PE 01-09, the COVID-19 Active Monitoring Epidemiology and Lab Capacity Grant, and the PE 01-10, Oregon Immunization Program and CARES Dollars, and those are both federal funds. Our staff, our budget and accounting staff, I think it's appropriate to highlight them on Administrative Professionals Day as well, because they went through the painful process of going back through our records from fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21 to come up to basically match with Oregon Health Authority and show that we actually did spend these funds. And through this process of reallocating funds, Oregon Health Authority sends us a settlement letter based on our contract language, so we basically have to agree that, on the funds that we currently have, and agree that we did spend these in a previous contract period. So it's just some accounting issues that are getting resolved and cleaned up, and we have an agreement on how much funds are left. In PE 01-10, there's about $228,000 left, and we do anticipate spending those. For the COVID-19 Active Monitoring Epidemiology and Lab Capacity, there's quite, there's probably over a million dollars left, and I'm not sure that we're actually going to be able to spend all of those funds, because it's very restricted to COVID or respiratory issues, and so there's a potential for us to give some of those funds back in the future if we're not able to spend them, but we're trying to maximize our, those revenue streams as best as we can at this point. If you have any questions about those, I'm gonna have to defer them to Ryan for the accounting stuff, so if you want to get into the weeds on that at all. Didn't think so.
I do not.
Nope.
Okay.
We were gonna recognize your administrative accounting people for.
Yes.
And, and Ryan used to do all that stuff, too, I know.
He's the one that noticed the error in the first place and raised the issue, so we, we didn't actually lose those funds.
I guess, I guess, Mr. Chair, if I may, I do have, so there's a million dollars in the, over a million dollars according to this, but how do we, how would we even opt to spend it? What, what type of a situation would arise that we would spend that kind of money or get it out on a contract to somebody, or et cetera?
So it's, they're very restrictive to COVID or respiratory outbreaks and issues, and so these funds currently pay for some of our communicable disease program staff. And so, we, and some of our messaging and advertising around prevention of respiratory illnesses, these could be used, but.
Is there any way to partner with our local health partners, you know, San Am or Salem Health to, because they're still dealing with it in the hospitals and in their offices.
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea.
Partner and get the funds there?
Yeah. Ryan and I, well, Brian's writing that down. I think there is room to explore what that might look like.
Good.
There is one more adjustment, which is also pretty administrative, which is Program Element 73. This is our Early Intervention Services and Outreach Program, and it's basically for HIV prevention, testing, treatment services, case management, and outreach. This is moving to the local public health authority intergovernmental agreement through Program Element 73. So Program Element 73 is brand new, however, this is just operated in a separate intergovernmental agreement with OHA, and so now they're just lumping it in to this larger IgA, so we don't have to sign two of them. We have had these funds since like 2016, 2017, and they paid for our outreach van and some of the staffing that goes out and does the HIV, gonorrhea, chlamydia, and syphilis testing out in the community. This project only adds $277,778 through, and this is just January 1, 23 through June 30th, 2023, because that's, all that's left in this biennium. And so, but our total award amount from January 1 of 23 through June 30th of 2027 is 2.5 million. And so this is a five-year grant that is from the federal government that is flowing through the state to local public health authorities that have a certain prevalence of HIV infection in their community. So this, this program is really critical to our work around eliminating HIV, and we are also working with folks who, we want to reach people who are pregnant with syphilis at any stage, people with early syphilis, people with rectal gonorrhea, or people with known HIV infection with a new early syphilis, gonorrhea, or pregnant with syphilis at any stage. So what we're trying to do is reach people before they get HIV, so the, that list of folks I just read off are at higher risk, and so it's beyond just working with people that have HIV infections, it's about that prevention piece as well. We also try to get people re-engaged into care, and so treatment in this situation, treatment of HIV is also prevention, because undetectable equals untransmittable. So it's important for prevention and anti-stigma messaging that a person with, living with HIV has an undetectable HIV viral load, they cannot transmit HIV to others through sexual contact. So this program is, I think I mentioned already, really important to us. We do collaborate with HIV Alliance. They're responsible for the case management piece with folks living with HIV and getting them established with care providers. And since these are federal funds, they are not allowed to be used for harm reduction supplies or services such as syringe exchange programs, cookers, cotton, or other drug paraphernalia, and they are not able to be used for purchasing STI or HIV tests or test kits. So it's all around the staffing and infrastructure to support the program. So we have several staff, our van, we're out at the Transition Center, we're out and working with our community partners with serving people who are unhoused and various areas around the county where we see a higher prevalence, or there might be some, some areas where we know we need to go. So this is also just very administrative, moving to a new IgA.
That's the PE 73?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Anything else, Katrina? No?
I think that's it.
Questions, Commissioner Cameron? Look, I just got a PhD and.
Right. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve amendment number 14 to the intergovernmental agreement IgA with Oregon Health Authority to decrease funding in the amount of $1,516,267.44. Thank you, Ryan, for the exact amount. For a new contract total of $18,551,888.19 through June 30th, 2023, for the following programs, I'm gonna say PE 01-09 decreases funding in the amount of $457,301.22. PE 01-10 for a decrease in funding in the amount of $1,336,744.22, and PE 73 for an increase in the amount of $277,778.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes.
Oh, I got all those numbers right?
Okay, that's it for our agenda today. Thank you, Katrina. Do you have anything else you want to share before we adjourn?
I think, I think we adjourn, and then we come back at 11, right? And we're noticed at 11?
For a Brook Service District meeting.
Yeah. Well, just, I, I think, Katrina, it's interesting, you mentioned where we would go with the van, and we finally cut the ribbon at the navigation center on Monday here in Salem, and that might be a spot where we would pull in and, and do some testing and oh, but the money you said was not used for testing, so obviously we have somewhere else that we could use for testing for that.
It's for the staff, and so we get reimbursed for the testing.
Okay. So that would be one place, but that was a good, it was a good event that we had, and yeah, it's a busy week. We're going up to San Am tonight. Are you able to?
Oh, we are, yeah.
Yeah, we're going up to the school for the San Am Chamber Awards and the scholarships that they give.
That's a fun one.
Uh huh, and you know, obviously, we lost a good member up there in Mike Long this year, who ran that youth golf tournament that donates all that money, so. Yeah, it's been a busy week. We had our parks, first parks planning review with citizens up the little North Fork on Monday night. Yeah, it's, it's good. Lots going on still. Back to normal.
That's it. Very good.
Although we were listening to COVID dollars that we didn't spend, and you know, it's like, ooh.
That's a long time ago. We don't even remember those times. All right, we're adjourned. All right, we're adjourned.